Well, everyone who are here, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, welcome, everyone, to the February meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. We had Pledge of Allegiance, roll call, please.
Albrecht.
Here.
Buckley.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Labella's excused.
Lapp.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Shingles.
Here.
Squaterito.
Here.
Thering.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of tonight's agenda, so you have the agenda in front of you. There are, let's see, two new busi-- three new business items. And is there anything else that anyone's aware of that needs to be on tonight's agenda? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
So, motion was by Gross, second by Thering to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we have our agenda. Next item is approval of the minutes. We last met on June, or excuse me, January 16th. And so you have the January minutes. Are there any corrections to the January minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
Support.
So, motion by Shingles, second by Thering to approve the minutes as submitted. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, minutes are approved. So, next item is correspondence, board reports, presentations. We'll take them in order. First item is Commissioner Thering, updates from Board of Trustees.
I have nothing to report today.
Okay. Are there any questions for Commissioner Thering in relation to Board of Trustees matters? Okay, if not, thank you. Next item is Commissioner Buckley, updates from ZBA. I don't know if you've met recently, but...
We've not had a meeting and we're canceled for the first of March as well, so no updates here.
Okay, all quiet on that front. Any questions for Commissioner Buckley from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. As usual, you have in your packet the Community and Economic Development Monthly Report. It is as encyclopedic as usual, very thorough. Are there any questions from Commissioners about anything you saw in the monthly report? Includes our activities, as well as trustees and all the groups, as well as their own individual activities. Zoning enforcement, all kinds of good stuff.
Have a question?
Yeah, please.
On page two or page eight of the overall packet, you list the unsuccessful efforts to get answers from the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe Representatives about building code and local ordinance enforcement questions. I'm just wondering what happens next with that?
I've been waiting for that question. So, the tribe is a sovereign nation. The Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe is a sovereign nation. About half of our township is within the Isabella Indian Reservation, including this property on East Baker Road that was once Mid-Michigan Community College. And prior to that, it was an oil company headquarters. The, as a sovereign nation, they have rights and certain ability to take care of their own business. And certainly land that is held in trust by the federal government for the tribe is, we have no say over in most in our township. This property is not in trust. Properties are not in trust. The answer is a little fuzzier as to what, whether there's local control or not, or whether it's entirely within the tribe. But this one, essentially, all I was wanting to do was get something from them that simply confirmed that they were taking full responsibility for this property, which they, as you may have seen, they're rehabbing for the new Saginaw Chippewa Tribal College. And worked with Eric Rodriguez, their Public Relations Director, over quite a number of months. Tied a couple of different meetings with him and with their legal counsel. And I was told many times that we would be getting something from them that confirmed that. We have not received anything. And it's just simply reached the point where they're basically done with the project now, and there's really no point in even continuing the conversation. So, as far as we are concerned as a township, we respect the tribe and their status as a sovereign nation. We respect their ability to take care of their own affairs. They purchased the building, they're going to use it for their purposes. And so we are simply acting, continuing to act as we have been under the assumption that they have full jurisdiction over the work that was being done in terms of renovation project. That's where it was left. This was really just to make note that this has been closed out because this has been in a few different reports. And so I wanted to kind of give a closure to it, even though it's not the closure I would prefer. At this point, as I said, we simply continue to do what we do, is respect the tribe's rights as a sovereign nation.
How would that impact future zoning issues related to that property?
Well, it's an interesting question as well, because, of course, the Big B Coffee is there. And the Big B Coffee itself, so far, has not been removed from our jurisdiction. It is a least partial on the property. So, as long as the tribe owns it, as long as they maintain control and operation of it, it is the tribe's jurisdiction. We certainly acknowledge its existence. It would be, it's part of our planning that it's there. And we certainly appreciate the people that will be coming there because they would be hopefully shopping and eating and such in the areas around it. But as far as we're concerned, we don't have any jurisdiction over the property.
Okay.
I'd never thought about some of this stuff before, but you've kind of raised my curiosity. So, let's use that property as an example. That property, if the tribe owns that property, then they have the authority to enforce code, et cetera, all kinds of stuff. And their codes, their regulations. So, the Big B, that project came before us. I remember, we looked at it. Could they have instead, if, I don't think they, maybe the sale hadn't gone through at that point, but if the sale had gone through at that point, could they have simply gone to the tribe and said, "We want to do this," and if they said okay, then we would never have even seen it?
Potentially, if the tribe owned the property when they started that, then yes, we may never have seen that project at all. And of course, the big example in the room is the casino. Casino, Chippewa Township had no zoning for a casino. Nobody has zoning for a casino. But the tribe has, has rights on its property, within its reservation area, to do as they choose. And so we have casino. The Chippewa Township sign ordinance does not allow that big billboard sign that they have. But they have jurisdiction over that. So, it is what it is in that regard. As I said, they are a sovereign nation. They're a nation within our community and within adjacent communities. We've dealt with this, when I first came here, we dealt with it with a house that had been owned by a tribal member. That tribal, it had been sold. But our records were still treating it as if it was owned by the tribal member, even though it was no longer owned by them. Well, when it's owned by a tribal member, who lives there, it's part of the tribe. We don't have jurisdiction over it from a building code perspective. But if it's sold to somebody else, then it falls right, it falls back into our jurisdiction. So, things kind of move in and out in some cases, like that one did. And one of the first things I did when I came to the township was say, "No, no, that's ours now." They don't live there anymore, but they sold it, it's not owned by them, so it's back under our jurisdiction. It was a property that needed to be, it had renovations. The question was, who had responsibility over building code for it? So, you know, there are other properties over there. There's a long piece of property that extends back next to Taco Bell, kind of wooded piece that goes back into our industrial park, that's tribal land. It is in the trust for the tribe. And we have, we've heard in some different things that they've been proposed for that property. They haven't done anything with it at this point, but they could at any time. And if they did, it would be entirely their jurisdiction to do that. I think the only place that the township would be involved is we would be probably providing the water and sewer utilities for it, because the tribe does not have water and sewer in that area. There are areas of the township, specifically their business park down off of Broadway, where they do have water and sewer, or water, anyway, that they pipe through our township to serve their business park, next to the Mid-Michigan College on Broadway. So, we work together. We certainly have agreements in certain things. But as I said, no matter what, we respect their sovereignty. Well, I guess one last comment on that is that, not too long, I shared this with Peter at the time. There was a nice article, the American Plant Association has a publication, I think it's a zoning practice, I think they call it. And it talks about different topics. It kind of goes into depth on various topics. And they had one on tribal zoning, tribes and land use and zoning. And it was a long article, talked about properties in trust, not in trust, and all the various permutations, and the number of treaties and federal laws and all that that made in play with this. They really could have boiled the entire article down to, in terms of whether there's local jurisdiction or tribal jurisdiction is, it depends. It's really very complicated. And so, at the end of the day, the key thing is, they are a sovereign nation, we respect that.
Will the tax implications change on that building?
A new building?
Yeah, now that they...
Actually, they will not, because the property was purchased by them from Mid-Michigan College. And even though it was vacant for a number of years, it was still tax exempt because the college owned it. They actually used it for a few things. It was not fully occupied, but they were using it enough to be able to call it occupied. So, it was tax exempt the whole time.
Other questions about the monthly report? Okay, thank you. Any other reports that anyone's aware of that, or communications, presentations, anything that would fall under this category? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is public comments. So, towards the beginning of each Planning Commission meeting, we have a public comment that is restricted to items that are not on the agenda. So, we do have a public hearing tonight, that will be separate and later. This is just public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission on such an item, they're invited to do so at this time. We ask you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to three minutes. We can also take comments from folks online if we have any. And public comment is open at 7:14. And we do not have anyone in our online boardroom. And seeing none at the moment, we'll assume that folks are here for other purposes. So, we'll go ahead and close the, this public comment, also at 7:14. There's an extended public comment towards the end of the meeting. So, now we can move on to new business. The first item is PSUP 23-01, the special use application for the short-term rental at 5339 East Broadway Road. We'll first have introduction by township staff, then we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll have the public hearing, and then we will deliberate.
Thank you. Everybody should have a copy of our report in the packet dated 13th of February. We introduced this last month, so I won't, people did a thorough job with that, so I won't go into too much detail. As I think we mentioned last time, this was a case where this was an existing Airbnb that came to our attention. And we let the owner know that he did need to get a special use permit in order to operate a short-term rental in the township. And he's been absolutely cooperative all the way through the process. The packet, the information, you have the application information, it's very thorough for the property. And as you'll note in our report, based on all the standards that apply, both the special use approval standards and the specific standards that apply to short-term housing, the application is very consistent with all of that. Just a couple of items. This is one of those unusual cases where you have the special use permit application to review and take action on. There is an associated minor site plan application. The minor site plan is an administrative process normally, but in this case, there's one little detail. Basically, where this comes into play, there's a few of these kind of lower intensity activities, like group daycare homes and other things that need a special use permit, where the state law says that if a special use permit application is required, a site plan is required. Where we basically made those a minor site plan action. So, it's still a site plan, but it's administrative review. In this case, as you'll note in our report, there is even a piece on the site plan, though, for your action, and that's related to the sidewalk. There is a request there for relief, temporary relief from construction of the sidewalk. This section of Broadway, as noted in the report, is not one of the designated roads in our 2018 policy where sidewalks are required to be constructed. Other sections of Broadway are, but this one's not. And it would be, if it was constructed, it'd be the only section of sidewalk in that entire long block between Isabella and the freeway. So, as we note in our report, we're very comfortable with recommending that the temporary relief be granted. And that is something that the Planning Commission has the authority to grant, and that cannot be granted administratively. So, we have really two items of business for you tonight to consider. One is a special use permit, and the second one is this relief from the sidewalk construction. So, with that in mind, I'm happy to answer questions as we go along. But overall, as I said, we found the application to be in very good order, and it satisfied all the requirements that apply. We did include in a set of motions, if you decide to use a particular one, the motion to approve with conditions, the conditions are really housekeeping. One is simply a reminder that they do need to comply with the annual zoning permit. Makes bits of renewal every year of this short-term approval that happens administratively. And then the second item is, if you choose to go that route, would be simply an action to say that the sidewalk relief is approved. So, with that, I'm happy to answer questions as we go along.
I have a question related to the short-term rental zoning. Generally, I understood with a special use permit, that stays with the property. But in this case, if they don't renew the zoning, would it then end the special use permit?
No, it would not. No, the special use permit would remain valid. The annual zoning permit's simply to verify they're still in compliance with the conditions that apply.
Okay.
And so, if for some reason they weren't, that would be handled as an ordinance enforcement matter.
Other questions at the outset for Rodney? Obviously, he'll be here to answer questions if they come up. Okay, thank you. So, next, on the schedule anyways, is updates from the applicant. If there's anything the applicant would like to say at the outset, you're welcome to. And then we'll have the public hearing, and there may be questions later on, so...
Yeah, I think, first of all, I'm Brent Curtis, so I'm the owner there. And appreciate everybody taking this into consideration. Peter's been a big help getting us together, because, as I had mentioned, I kind of got the cart in front of the horse here and had this thing happening and didn't realize I needed the permitting that was necessary to operate this Airbnb there. So, my mom lives in the three-bedroom residence there, and then we have just a little studio there. So, I just, again, would like to say thank you for all the help with getting it put together and the consideration for moving forward with it. Other than that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions about the property. We did put together the minor site plan there. We weren't performing anything structurally to the property, but wanted to try to document some of the boundaries and different things that are involved with that property. So, other than that, appreciate your time.
Other immediate questions for the applicant? I have one question. This issue about the frequency of rental, I gather that's a requirement of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it is.
The period of time shall be one to 30 nights, with a maximum of one rental in any four-night period. I want to make sure I understand that second part and how it actually would work in practice. So, let's say that I want to stay there for two nights. So, and I have to say, I've never used the Airbnb platform, so I'm not familiar with it. But I want to stay there two nights. So, I go and stay there two nights. Does that mean that you can't have another guest for another four nights or another two nights?
The short-term rental may be for a period from one to 30 nights. So, in your example, you have a two-night stay. So, that's one to 30 nights. A maximum of one short-term rental event shall occur in any four-night period. And so, your question is...
If I stay there the two nights, how soon could someone else stay there?
If, for example, if it was vacant the day before you stayed, it was vacant the day after, there was a four-day block right there, and then...
So, it could be as soon as the second day after I checked out?
I will say this, that from an ordinance enforcement perspective, we're not checking this, we're not going to checking his register every week or anything like that. And so, this would really be complaint-driven. So, suddenly, every night, party's going on.
Yeah.
You know, that's when we're going to bring this into play. And that's really why this rule is here, is to create some gaps, create some space, because these are part of a neighborhood. And so, it's an attempt to create some downtime, essentially, it requires some downtime.
Yeah, no, I think I understand that, and I understand why it's there and so on. But then, how, what's the mechanism on Airbnb to prevent someone? Like, how is that going to be? I realize we're not going to be policing it, but I still wonder, how is it going to be managed in terms of preventing someone from staying right after someone else? Does the thing get blocked?
So, I could, I can answer that. On the Airbnb app, and just, I guess, for full clarity, I may have to make an adjustment. I wasn't real sure, the clause that you're bringing up there, we haven't run into it because, basically, the people that rent it are either in for a short weekend for a concert at the casino, or maybe like, you know, a student graduating from CMU. And we really don't... student graduating from CMU. And we really don't want the headache. As mentioned, we'd rather rent it about 12 times a month, and, and that's plenty. So what we can do in there is you could go in and block dates.
Hmm.
And you can set it, for instance, you know, if we had somebody move out today, we all have jobs and things, and that, for my wife, or my kids, or my mom, to be able to get it cleaned and turned around, it's not real advantageous for us. So you can set that Airbnb app to block out days. So if a person checks out, you could block the next day. I haven't done that, because we haven't had that issue, and, and that's something that I would have no problem with doing, if that keeps me in compliance or is required. So, so you have a lot of control. So like, we're going on spring break, and I don't want any headaches, so we're just blocking all those days where I can't be rented.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for the applicant while he's up there? Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll proceed to the public hearing. As Rodney mentioned, this was in the newspaper, and property owners were notified, as required by the ordinance. So we always want to give everyone an opportunity to address the planning commission. We'll give everyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak for three minutes, and then if there's additional desire to speak, once everyone who wants to speak has had a chance to speak, we'll consider additional comments. So once again, we ask anyone who wants to address the planning commission to give us, to come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the minutes, address your comments to the planning commission, and limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone who's online that wants to offer a comment, we'll allow them to do so. So the public hearing on PSUP 23-01 is open at 7:25.
Nobody's online.
Okay, so we don't have any electronic visitors. So once again, if there's anyone who would like to address the planning commission on the special use permit application, they're welcome to do so at this time. Always listen for screeching of tires in the parking lot if there's somebody coming to, to say something. Don't want to cut them off. Once again, if anyone would like to address the planning commission on this application, they're welcome to do so at this time. And last call for public comments on special use permit application 23-01. I assume nothing in writing was received on this?
Nothing was received.
Okay. So no written comments either. So seeing no one addressing, seeking to address the planning commission on this, we'll let the record show that no public comments were offered, and we'll close the public hearing at 7:27. So we've completed the public hearing. The next item is commission review of the special use permit application, and any public comments, which we don't have. So, once again, in your packet, in, in, is it Rodney's report or Peter's report? I think it was Peter's report. In the report, the, on page 28 of your packet, it lists the standards for special use approval. And so as we've done in the past, I think it makes good sense to go through these. You know, staff has given you their take on it, but obviously, as commissioners, we want to make our own independent judgment. So I'll read each one of these. If anyone has any comments, commissioners have any comments, jump in. And if not, we'll just move on to the next one. So the proposed land use is identified in section three as a special use in the zoning district. I believe that is accurate. The location, design, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and operational conditions of the special use will not be hazardous, detrimental, or injurious to the environment or the public health, safety, or general welfare by reason of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, odors, dust, glare, light, drainage, pollution, or other adverse impacts. Probably the main ones here that could potentially come up would be traffic and noise, but does anybody have any particular concerns with those? The next one is the special use will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner compatible with adjacent uses, the surrounding area, and the intent of the zoning district. Where determined necessary by the planning commission, the applicant has provided adequately for any restrictions on hours or days of operation, which they've done, minimization of noise, and screening improvements or other land use buffers to ensure land use compatibility and minimize adverse impacts. I believe they've indicated in their application that they'll make sure that renters are aware of township noise ordinances and things of that nature. Any comments? The next one, the special use location and character is consistent with the general principles, goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted master plan. It is a residential area, and they are using it for a residential purpose. Next, the proposed special use conforms to all applicable requirements or standards of this ordinance or other township ordinances. For this use, the following standards of section 6.58, short-term rental housing apply. I won't read all of those, but there's a series of particular requirements for that use. Any comments on the global requirement or any of the individual uses? Okay, hearing none. And then the last two, the approval of the special use location will not result in a small residential or non-residential area being substantially surrounded by incompatible uses. Again, it's all residential, so perhaps not. And then lastly, the impact of the special use will not exceed the existing or planned capacity of public or municipal services or infrastructure, including but not limited to roads, police, fire, protection services, refuse disposal, municipal water or sewer, sewage systems, other utilities, drainage facilities, and public or private wells. The proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for services or infrastructure that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. So any, any comments from commissioners on any of those? Any concerns? As you can see from the report, township staff believe that it does conform with those, Any further discussion on the, on the special use request?
I'll get a motion on the floor then. I make a motion to approve PSUP 23-01, special use application for a short-term rental located at 5339 East Broadway Road, parcel number 14-013-10-032-03 in the northwest quarter of section 13, and in the R2B, one and two-family medium residential zoning district, finding that it can comply with section 6.58, short-term rental housing, and section 14.3.3J standards for special use approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the short-term rental use shall be operated and maintained in full compliance with the housing licensing code ordinance and section 6.58, short-term rental housing of the zoning ordinance, including requirements for annual rental certification and administrative zoning permit approvals. Notification to the zoning administrator of, of updated owner and local agent contact information within 24 hours of a change and proper payment of all applicable Michigan sales tax, sales or use taxes. Number two, the associated request for temporary relief from sidewalk construction along East Broadway Road frontage of the subject parcel is approved with a finding that it is consistent with criteria number four of the township's 2018 sidewalk relief policy, provided that the wording of the request is updated on the minor site plan to match criteria number four.
Okay, you've, you've heard the motion. Is there a second? Support by Gross? So the motion was by Buckley, and the support was by Gross to approve the special use permit with conditions as stated. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Thering?
Yes.
Squaterito?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
And Lance?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that is approved, along with the temporary relief on the sidewalks. So good luck with the project.
Appreciate it.
And we're ready to move on to our next new business item. This is a final site plan approval for PFP final 24-01 for the Walmart grocery pickup service expansion and parking lot site improvements.
Thank you. This, this item, do we have any? Walmart folks said they were going to be coming in via Zoom. Remember last month, I think they said the same thing, and apparently they're not here again. But we'll talk a little bit about that. We have our report in your packet and a copied plan. Our report's dated February the 9th. You'll, you'll note a little bit of unusual wording in the, in the action items. The handwritten engineer's revision date of January 17th, that is written that way because they did not update, they didn't add a printed revision date in there, which typically we see from the engineer. They just, they had, they added a revision, they didn't do that. He simply signed it and dated his signature. So we're using that as our revision date. And that's completely suitable. It's just not common. So it was once very common, actually, that, that was our revision date. But anyway, you have our report dated February the 9th. This is for, in addition to the Walmart, the south side, primarily for their, their pickup service. But also importantly for us, some significant improvements to the parking lot, and primarily improvements to the access points at the north and south ends of their lot. The, this isn't, as far as the ordinance is concerned, an existing non-conforming site. So you see in our report, I think in page 59 of the packet, page two of our report, the comments about projects' compliance with the provisions of our section just called non-conforming sites. That section, if you recall, simply says that they don't have to fix everything that might not conform to our current site development standards. But we focus in on certain things. Public safety deficiencies being the number one priority. And that was the number one reason, priority for, for improving the, the access points, was to deal with some significant safety deficiencies at those points. So overall, they, they satisfied those requirements. We, for example, we didn't get into landscaping changes we might get into if this was a brand-new property, because they, they, this non-conforming site section essentially has a menu of choices. They, they take care of the public safety deficiencies, and then they, they take care of at least three of the 10 broad categories that are in that section of the ordinance. In this case, they, they more than dealt with that in terms of the changes they're making. We found, overall, the, the site plan is fully in good order. They have also satisfied all the outside agency requirements that apply. And we've received word from all the, the agencies that have been applying, that, that things are in good order from their perspective as well. And so at this point, the project is ready for your final review and action, and we recommend approval of the plan as presented. With that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Rodney?
Yes, I noticed, um... I'm sorry. Like, I'm, for the yes and no questions, there's some that they did not answer. That, like on page two of four, 11, 12, 13, 14, I don't know.
Yeah, see, they're all empty.
Page 40 of the packet. You can't read it, but it's...
Yeah.
Is there a particular question you had a concern about?
No, no concern. I just, normally, I'm used to seeing everything marked yes or no, or at least acknowledged. And I, I'm sure you saw that. I was just, there was a few of them on there, so I was just gonna ask.
There, there were, I will say that essentially, they were not fully applicable to the, to the site or the, or the project. And so if they had been, if there'd been a, a question about whether they might answer yes to something, then we would have had them revise that. But just as frankly, we have a checklist in ordinance for site plan applications, and what needs to be on the site plan. There are, some of those I simply don't apply to a project. And what we tell people is it does apply, you don't need to tell us that it doesn't apply, you just simply move on. And so this is similar, that these, we're not, didn't have a bearing on this particular project. We always do prefer that they answer it, but, but not necessarily.
So presumably, the same would be true for the third page, number 31, in regards to storing, hauling, shredding, or processing scrap tires, which they do that. I mean, as, as a function of their automotive business, they, they, they have scrap tires or spare tires.
They do, they do not keep them, though, outside. They don't trade them, they don't, they're, they're not a disposal operation. They, they do take tires off, and obviously, they put new tires on. New tires are non-issue, and they, and the, the scrap tires are removed from the property, just as part of the other garbage in the property. So it's not, it's not a business element.
But that, I mean, not to nitpick, because I don't think it's critical, but presumably, they should have answered no to that question.
I suspect that, that, and we did not discuss it with them, which I can only speculate. But my, my suspicion is that they had a concern about answering yes or no, for exactly the reason Commissioner Buckley brought up, that, that they do remove tires, and they do, therefore, have old tires in their automotive area for a brief period of time.
And consecutively, maybe permanently, albeit on a rotating basis, they always have some tires that they're storing. But that's nitpicking, so.
So that, that list, I mean, just an example, that, that's not actually even an ordinance requirement that they provide that list. We, we have included that as part of our application materials to simply guide the applicants where there are hazardous issues, or just to have clarity as much as possible as to what's going to be going on in this property. But it, it, actually, filling that out is not even an ordinance requirement. It's simply helpful to have that, those details. Because anybody, of course, we have the hazardous statement at the beginning, like, I can say that, but then you sort of go through the details, go, oh, well, yes, I do have that, or I do have that. And so having, having those answers where it's appropriate is simply helpful to guide your understanding of the use of the property.
Other questions for Rodney?
Are we ready for a motion?
Could be. We don't have any more questions.
I'll do it. Move to approve the Pfinal SPR 24-01, final site plan for the handwritten engineer's revision date of January 17, 2024, for a 6.672 square foot expansion of the Walmart building to add a new pickup service area, along with associated parking lot and ingress/egress improvements to the site located at 4730 Encore Boulevard in the southwest quarter of section 2.6, and in the B-5 highway business zoning district, finding that the site plan fully complies with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for... finding that the site plan fully complies with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for final site plan approval, including sections 14.2. P, required site plan information, and 14.2. S, standards for site plan approval.
Okay, motion was made by McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shingles. Further, which is to approve the site plan as presented. Further discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Albrecht?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Thering?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Lab?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Squadrillo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that, that is approved. So one more item on our agenda tonight, business item. It is discussion of accomplishments, projects, desired outcomes, and other topics of discussion to share with the Board of Trustees during the April 17th Annual Joint Meeting. I think all of you are aware that once a year, there's a joint meeting of all the township boards. It's essentially hosted by the Board of Trustees, but you're all invited to that on Wednesday, April 17th. I will be there and, but, you know, anyone that wants to offer comments can do so. But go ahead and, and give us what you're looking for.
Well, thank you. As was said, this, we do have this annual meeting coming up. You are all invited. Beyond the 17th, I think we're having it at Jameson Hall. What is the time of it?
Six.
Six o'clock, 6:00 PM at Jameson Hall. So if you haven't been in Jameson Hall recently, it's worth the visit. The renovation was done there. Certainly encourage you to participate in that. As part of that meeting, this is, this is part of our Board of Trustees, part of their, their policy governance. They have, it's part of the policy to, to outreach to, to our boards and commissions and also to what their policy governance talks about is the owners, which is the residents, the voters, the, the residents of the community, are the owners of this community. And so this is all part of that outreach between the Board of Trustees and, and the owners and to, to each of our boards and commissions. So it's an opportunity to report back to the Board of Trustees what, what we've been doing. That's kind of the, the past side of things. And that has been the focus of some previous meetings, is really looking at reporting on what we did over the past year. The Board of Trustees has, in their discussions, has made a point to, to ask that we, we look at, at going, going, looking forward. So that's why this talks about accomplishments, certainly in projects. That's the kind of past and present elements. But also what are, what are your desired outcomes? The, what do you want to have happen in this community from your perspective? What do you want to have happen in terms of what, what do you want to accomplish as a commission? And then, and then other topics of discussion, again, looking forward. What, what are, what are your goals? What are, what are your priorities for, for the community from your perspective as a planning commissioner? And as I said, the Board of Trustees are very interested in having this meeting look forward towards the future. What's interesting about it is it makes it part of our effort at the master plan update, because it essentially becomes an element of our public outreach. Because we are residents, we are owners in this community. And I'm using the royal we here. I do not live in Union Township, so I'm, I'm going to use the royal we that we all are. I'm, I'm owner in the sense that I have, I have a commitment here as well as an employee. The, we have an opportunity to, to hear from one another. And so there are a number of boards and commissions that will be at this meeting. And each one has different perspectives. I just earlier this evening, I was with the, the EDA Board, our Economic Development Authority Board, that governs the two DVA districts that we have. And they have a very specific perspective that's, and it's, it may be different from yours. And so it's an opportunity to hear from the different perspectives. And, and so it ultimately becomes part of our, the public input essentially, as part of our master plan. One of the ways we've gained, gained some input on, on future plans. So it's a good opportunity for you to talk about what's important to you and what your priorities are. Did I hit on everything?
Yeah, we just, we would like the citizen participation. So if you have ideas about our community, start thinking about them and then maybe, I don't know if we can have a quick little discussion about it at our next meeting, so that we can maybe write them down to let our chair, maybe as he's giving his report, to maybe say a couple of words of how we would like our community to look. Because that helps the board challenge our manager and, and the staff to take the ideas forward. And I think the survey might have some impact on it as well. So we really want as much participation as we can. That's kind of why we moved it. I think we used to have it in the fall, but we moved it to the spring, just after the joint meeting. So that's a really good time where people are all coming together and have an opportunity. So if you do have some ideas, please say something and you can get them down and present them and you will definitely be heard.
We could, we could certainly put this on the agenda for, for next month. You will have the benefit next month of having a presentation from Dr. Center from CMU on the, on the survey. All, that report is, is, I think is now wrapped up. Didn't have it for this meeting, but we will definitely have it for the next one. She's planning to come to the meeting to, to make a presentation, answer questions, and you'll have copies of it for that meeting. So that, that will certainly be part of it. I will say that the same, the same joint meeting is important as, as Commissioner Thering said. The Board of Trustees, after this meeting, has a, has a discussion on their ends, what the, the, what the Policy Governance Manual calls the global ends, which are really their desired outcomes. What do they want the township to, to be, to do? What do they want the, the staff to do? What do they want the priorities to be over the next year? And anybody can look at the Policy Governance Manual. It's on our website. And the ends is right at the beginning. It's right at the beginning of the document. But every year, the board reviews that and, and they do tweak it as policies and preferences change. So your input will, will directly guide that. It also has the potential to guide the budget process, because we start the budget process basically in July at the staff level, anyway, in terms of trying to put pieces together. That budget is also based on those ends, because those are what, what, those ends of the board sets drive and what we're, what projects we're going to work on and where we're going to prioritize funding. And so you, you do have the opportunity to, to influence the direction of the township over the coming year in a significant way through this process.
Please, please, Paul, when you have coffee there, you got a plethora of knowledge every, you know, start talking to them. Bring, bring some of that good coffee wisdom back.
You don't want all of it.
Well, I'll just take a little bit.
Filtered.
You want the first cup's worth, not the third cup's worth.
Thank you, thank you. Maybe, maybe just get the sugar in there and call it good.
Believe it or not, I do talk, I do bring things forward and ask for input.
Absolutely. This is, this is so important. We've been trying the last few years to try to get more and more input, so it makes a big difference.
Are there any, I mean, we've had a relatively short meeting tonight. We'll have a relatively short meeting, but are there any, does anybody have any thoughts right now that they want to offer? Would it be helpful, are there, are there particular issues that have come up? I have to admit, I don't attend or watch all of the, all of your August meetings, but are there, are there issues that have come up that appear to be kind of decision points or just ideas that someone has had at some point that we could react to?
That we could react to?
Well, just in, from the standpoint, I mean, it's one thing, and I, I'm totally supportive of it, asking people, okay, you know, in the back of your mind, what, you know, throw an idea, what do you think, but are there things that are kind of percolating that we might not be aware of already?
I'd actually like just to keep that open, just what, what, as you drive through our community, rather than try to influence anyone, I'd just, as, as you drive through, walk through, or sitting there thinking about our community, what just, what's something that pops into your head, you know? To be specific would be kind of, may not be as easy as if you were a little bit more broader, so that it helps, you know. Something very specific may be more difficult to do than something more broader to allow our manager and their, and the staff to, if it's that important to all of us, to make happen. So yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to influence you with anything that we're talking about. It's, what, what do you think?
Okay, so, so when you're, when you're either having your coffee or some other beverage or anything else, be thinking about your, your wild uninhibited wishlist for Union Township. How's that?
We'll take it. We'll take it.
Other, other comments?
Wild and uninhibited.
Think we could always use another marijuana dispensary.
Yeah, well, none in the township, right?
I know. I'm just saying, for the township.
The city has loosened up their restrictions on that then, it seems like.
Is there one, I think we have more dispensaries than we have liquor stores.
Go to Big Rapids, you will disagree, you and you.
Oh, is that right?
Mount Pleasant is tame.
Oh, wow.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I've seen it in communities to the east.
It's gonna have to bottom out at some point.
Grab a stone, close your eyes and throw it, and you're probably gonna come within 50 yards of one, no matter where.
It's, it's a goal in those communities, just to see who survives. It seems like it's not really great planning, but I guess they don't want to prohibit businesses.
Well, the city of Bay City had a rational plan to start with. I'm sorry, the city of Bay City, the city of Mount Pleasant. City of Bay City didn't, actually. City of Bay City said, we want as many as we can get. The city of Mount Pleasant said, we want three. Because the state law said that local governments can, can limit the number of licenses, and it didn't say how they limited. And, and so they had a rational approach. They took applications, they reviewed them all. There were three recommended choices for this committee that was created. And those three were given approval, and almost immediately, the ones that were not approved filed a lawsuit. And the end results of that, after a long period of time, was the city changed its rules to open it up. And that has happened all over the state, where, where communities have tried to limit it. Those that didn't get, didn't pass muster for whatever reason, then sued. And it usually, man, the settlement is to allow them and perhaps others to, to come in as well. So in all practical purposes, the, the choices are don't allow them at all or allow them without limit.
Do you know if there has been any tracking by the sheriff or the city police on increase of substance abuse stops, arrests, any of that? I haven't seen any news articles on that. I'm sort of curious whether there has been like an increase or not.
All I would know is the, is when the sheriff has come to Board of Trustees meetings, when I've been, where I've been, he's reported to the Board of Trustees. I don't recall him commenting on that particular topic.
I, I don't recall that being a topic of conversation. I mean, there's a, a statistic there, but I mean, it's.
I would think it probably changed more when it became legalized, more than just, I mean, because people are, if they want it, they're gonna drive a half an hour to buy it or buy it here. So I think the changes, or fluctuations and incidents has probably changed when the law changed, not when we got so many dispensaries, but I don't know for sure either.
I will say from a personal perspective, I'm completely happy to let the city have, have all the marijuana they want and completely happy not to have it in the township. It, it is a bear to deal with from a regulatory perspective.
And I suspect the market will dictate the number eventually. I mean, it's become a commodity and, you know, it's a race to the bottom for low cost.
Well, it's survival of the fittest, yeah.
Rodney had mentioned Bay City. That's where, where I work. And I mean, there's one road where I work, my build, there's probably four within a mile. And some of them are almost, two of the four are literally right across the street from each other. There actually might be a fifth one. I just didn't go, I don't go any farther east. And I'm not saying they're all open, but they all have their signs and it's, that's the business they're in, so. And that's just on one mile.
And anecdotally, I mean, I, with, with this, when the laws changed, I was working as a consultant. One of my communities that I worked for was just outside of Bay City, those little townships. And they were seeing businesses coming from Bay City where they were losing their place of business, essentially outbid for, for a lease or renewal or whatever for their property, or they were offered money they couldn't refuse to buy the marijuana businesses to move in. So there were a lot of very long-time businesses in Bay City that, that, that moved elsewhere or closed because the marijuana folks simply have more cash and could outbid for, for those spaces.
Okay. So meetings in the home stretch here, we'll have extended public comment. So this is the portion of the meeting where individuals are invited to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not. We invite anyone who wishes to make a public comment to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes. Limit your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comment is open at 800 P.A.
Still no one in.
We still don't have anyone in our dusty online boardroom. And I don't have an audience anymore, so we'll go ahead and close back the extended public comment for another month, closed at 8:01. Next item is final board comment. Any final comments from commissioners? So it sounds like next month will be Doc Mary Center's report. Any, any guess on how many agenda items?
I'm expecting a final site plan from Valvoline. They have not submitted yet, but they, I have seen a lot of approvals from outside agencies come in. So I'm expecting them to drop off the application anytime. Outside of that, we also will have a request for a site plan extension for the Prestige Center. Received a letter from them for an extension on the site plan that we have moved.
Is that the one up on Pickard?
Broadway.
Broadway.
Oh, Broadway, okay. All right, I think I know which one you mean. Okay, so not super light, but not super heavy either, it sounds like.
We may have, there's one either, I just came up today, the EDA Board meeting. I mentioned their difference of opinion with the EDA Board. They, they actually had a conversation about zoning. We have a property that's in our Enterprise Industrial Park over off of Pickard Road on Enterprise Drive. It's called the Petro Plaza. It's a little office development, about three acres, five small buildings. And we run into a kind of odd zoning issue there in, in terms of the allowable activities on this property. The property had been almost entirely occupied by the, the Tribal College, which we just talked about earlier, is moving into the building on Pickard. They occupied four of the five buildings. And what's interesting about this property is it was built in 1981. It was built under our 1971 zoning ordinance, which in 1971, our ordinance allowed office as a standalone activity in the industrial district. Every ordinance since, including the 1981 ordinance, that was probably the process being adopted when this product, this construction was going on, beginning in 81, 91, and also 2020, the I-2 district has not allowed office as a standalone activity. The I-2 district only allowed. The I-2 district only allows office as an accessory use, meaning it has to be secondary to some other industrial operation, just like, for example, the old Birch Tank and Trailer, or the new Bandit facility, there's a little office building on their site with all their other industrial activities. So, basically, since the property was built, it's been a, the office activities have been a legal nonconforming use on that site. Now, that's protected forever, as they maintain it. The unusual thing that happened was, at some point, the tribe came in and occupied four of those five buildings for the Tribal College. Now, that, that has never been a legal use in the I-2 district, but as we talked about earlier, the tribe is a sovereign nation, so we, as, from our perspective, we consider that to have been lawfully established. And now that they're leaving, it is not, the office use that may have been there in 1981, but instead it is the institution of higher education, that is the law, the legal nonconforming use of four of those five buildings. The current owner would like to sell, and that's why this has come up, and they had a, obviously, there's a real challenge when four of your five buildings cannot be occupied for, for offices, and that's what you're expecting you could do with it. And so we've had some conversations, the reason it came up with the E D A Board is the, this is part of our East E D A District, and our E D A Board has the authority to purchase property for economic development purposes. And so this was just an introduction to them, that this property was for sale, and basically the owner had the opportunity to invite them to consider buying it, perhaps to redevelop the site. So I bring it up to you, and I can, I can share more, if you're interested, we can put this on the agenda, even invite the owner to come in and speak to you, if you, if you would like. Because our E D A Board basically said, why don't you fix the zoning? Why don't you just allow them to do what they want? Why don't you zone it office, or something? Or why don't you change the ordinance to allow office as a, as a standalone use in the industrial district? So I just said, I would bring it up to your attention, and as I said, if you're interested, I, to have it on the agenda as a discussion item, and we can kind of give you the full background and some material to share ahead of time, and even invite the owner, if he's available, to come in and share a few words as well. Is that something you'd like, like to hear about, hear more about?
Can I just ask clarification? Are you saying that because the tribe used it as an educational building, now you have to use it, you have to continue using it as an educational building, even though what they did was outside the bounds of our zoning, because they were a sovereign nation? I don't understand why it wouldn't still be an office building, based on the previous and then grandfathered in purposes?
Yeah. So it's, so what we're getting into is the, is the nitty gritty of nonconformities. So, nonconformities are a creature of zoning, there's, you know what, it's only the zoning ordinance that you have the circumstance where something can be a legal nonconforming use, or a legal nonconforming structure, meaning it violates our ordinance, but it has a legal protection to remain in place. Zoning, basically, it's a relief valve for zoning, that it was recognized when zoning was established, that there would be things that, that existed before, that all of a sudden would be illegal, stamping plant in a residential neighborhood, for example, or something, cite a crazy example. And, and so it's part of the State Zoning Acts, as they were being, being established, really as part of a standard model zoning act that was, that was created by the federal government, actually. I think it was Herbert Hoover, Secretary of Commerce, I think, back in the twenties, was when, or teens, or something like that, was when there was a standard idea for a zoning act. Anyways, part of that, the idea was to create this legal protection for those things, that were lawfully established before the ordinance was put in place. And the production's, the production is very limited. Some people think of being grandfathered in, which is kind of a colloquial term, to be very broad, that basically, you know, it's a license to do anything we want. Well, it's not, it's actually a very narrow thing that's, that's allowed. So in this case, in 1981, when the, when the 81 ordinance was adopted, all those buildings were, I'm sure, occupied by some kind of office activity. They were all now legal nonconforming uses, as offices. The problem is, once that use ceases, that is, once it's changed to something else, the, the former use is no longer protected. You don't retain that forever, you have to continue to operate, you have to continue to exist. And so in this case, four of the five buildings, the use was completely changed. Tribal College is not an office use, there are some offices in there, but it's not an office use, our ordinance calls that an institution of higher education, or higher learning, a school, you know, and that's a different creature, land use wise, from, from a professional or medical office. And, and so the former activity for those four buildings, the former office activity, that, that office grandfather, grandfathered office activity went away, and now the grandfathered activity that was legally established by the tribe is this, a school or higher education business. So that's the challenge we have, is that, is that the old office activities for those four buildings is no longer protected. They still can use it as office, and we've talked with them about this, as an accessory use, if there's an industrial operation, basically within the industrial park, Peter, as our zoning administrator, has the authority to interpret our ordinance, what is an accessory use, when is it, when is it an activity that's connected to, secondary to some other primary activity? Certainly, if it's on the same property, it would be an accessory use. What Peter said was, he was comfortable making an interpretation that if the industrial activity was in the, in the enterprise industrial park, even if it's not on the same property, that this could still be considered an accessory office. So there are some operations where that could work, you know, in this, in this particular case. But nonetheless, the protected grandfather activity on those four buildings is that, that higher education. It doesn't mean they have to use it for that, they can also use it for any other activities that are allowed in the I-2 district, or, which includes that accessory office activity. It just means that that higher education business is protected, as an, that's an additional thing that they can use it for.
So my guess is, the structure of the buildings themselves, given that they were made to be offices, now the owners want to sell them, obviously, they look like offices and function like offices, and/or classrooms, but if they're going to sell it to someone who can only use it for industrial purposes, unless accessory to an industrial, then the building is somewhat useless as they're trying to sell it, correct?
No, it's not, actually, there's, there's a number of activities, I mean, the industrial zoning district has a lot of things in it that are, are not in, not necessarily kind of traditional industrial, I mean, there's certainly like manufacturing, and warehouses, and distribution centers, and all those things. Frankly, distribution center could be one, in some cases, that it could be used for. But there are other activities, there's even commercial kennel in that district.
Okay.
So there, and I'm not saying that's the only one, there's a, there's a whole list of things that are allowed, that potentially this property could be used for, it's just narrower than it was originally designed for.
Gotcha, thank you.
So. And, so it feels as though you've given us the full background now, so.
Yeah, a lot of it.
So I guess my curiosity is, given the fact that they have, they can essentially avail themselves to the full, the full use by right that they have for that zoning district, what would be the purpose of them coming to present to us? I mean, it sounds like the, it sounds like what you're saying to us is that the owner wants to essentially be able to sell it as anything, rather than being limited by its current zoning.
Well, here, as I said, I invited him to come to the E D A Board, because the E D A Board can purchase property within their district for economic development. Similarly, here, the owner can apply for rezoning, he can also apply to amend the zoning ordinance, the text of the I-2 district, to restore what, what existed in the 71 ordinance, to allow offices as a standalone activity. So he can pursue those things. He, it certainly could be helpful to him to have initial comments and questions from you, as we've done in the past, where we've had people come in and kind of made an informal presentation on, on a topic that is of interest, or on something that they're thinking about. We, Peter and I certainly meet with people all the time that are kicking the tires, we've had, we've talked about this before, some of them appear in our report, in one form or another, where people want to get an idea, would this work, would this be possible? But, and we certainly can provide answers in some cases, but for example, in a rezoning or, or an ordinance amendment, that is ultimately a legislative matter, it's ultimately up to the Board of Trustees, and it's, it's up to you as a recommending body to the Board of Trustees. So we're not going to say yes or no to anything like that, but, but we certainly would invite them to, if you, if you have an idea for something like this, present it, to, you know, charge for that, we just, we can put you on the agenda for a presentation. And they can come in and kind of share with you what they're thinking, and, and maybe get a gauge, either from the questions you ask, or any comments you may have, as to whether this is something that, that they feel they might have success in pursuing. You know, obviously, you're not going to say yes or no, but, but simply making a presentation and getting some feedback can help, help somebody make a decision. So in this case, for the, for the owner, Mr. DeGroot, Ed DeGroot is his name, you know, if he chose to come in, if he wanted to do that, he could certainly, you know, kind of talk about that, what he's trying to do, he simply wants to sell the property. He, he and his family have owned it for many years, he's chosen to sell it, he's been on the market about nine months. So for him, that's his ultimate goal, but if there's something he can do to, to make that, the property marketable, or more marketable, that he could pursue as the owner, he certainly has the option to do that. And so those cases of either amending the zoning ordinance, or amending, or rezoning the property, it might be helpful for him to hear from you on some of the questions you have, or some thoughts you may have, before he makes a decision on pursuing something like that. So it is, as I said, you can do nothing, we can, we can leave it, really, this is not item on the agenda, I was just saying, it's something that we could put on the agenda for you to hear from him, and, and perhaps get some additional feedback that would be helpful for you, and perhaps for him as well.
I don't know if this is a question, or just a clarification, now, if, now, you said four of the buildings don't comply and one does, so does that muddy the waters? If, if one of the buildings is, is in compliance and the other ones now lose?
Well, actually, none of them comply, I spoke, I said, when I said yes, four of them, the, the legal nonconforming use is that Tribal College, or institution of higher education, school, whatever. The fifth building happens to be occupied by some professional offices, or was recently, anyway. I don't know if that's still current, but up until very recently, it was occupied by some folks that are not associated with any industrial operation in the community. So, so they are, they are still occupying the legal nonconforming office use of that fifth building. It's just the other four, the legal nonconforming use is the higher education business.
And it's all one parcel?
It's all one parcel, five buildings.
I guess my initial feedback on it is, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say it or not, but my initial feedback is that I would have to hear something much more compelling than I've heard so far, for us to consider changing our zoning, or to consider reinterpreting our zoning, just to enable the sale of a nonconforming lot.
Well, this would be my suggestion, and I, I respect that, but my, my suggestion is, if we, even for that comment, and obviously, it's recorded, but my suggestion is that we, we just simply include it on the agenda, if the gentleman's available to come in. And that way, you can hear from him, and as I said, you can give whatever feedback you like for him, Ed, but I think it would be helpful for him, in his decision-making, to, to hear from you, and have the opportunity to spend a few minutes chatting with you about it. And we'll, as I said, we'll share the background, I'll share the same background I shared with the E D A Board, and, and you've heard it all, anyway, from me, but you haven't heard his perspective. So if it's all right, if he's available, I'll just include it on the agenda for a presentation, and maybe decide what you'd like to do with it from there, if anything.
Yeah, if you think that we've got room in the March agenda, and if that's what, what he's interested in doing, if, if that's going to happen, well, I guess it probably would be there anyway, but, you know, I'd like to know what the address is, and so on, and be able to go out there and take a look, and get a sense of what it looks like.
I mean, yeah, and we'll certainly provide, he prepared a letter, I prepared a memo on the background I gave you about the history of the property, and then I think we included in the, in the E D A Board packet, a copy of the, the commercial real estate listing. So actually, you can see it right now, if you, if you go on our website and look at the E D A Board agenda for tonight's meeting, early, the early meeting, you can actually open the packet and see it, but we'll include it in your packet, so you'll have it before the meeting. Take a look.
Yeah. Well, I guess to echo, or perhaps expand upon Phil's comment, I would say that, given that there is not a, an immediate request in front of us, and it's more of just a kind of an informational conversation, I would save it for a light meeting, and I wouldn't try to pack it into anything that appears to have any significant number of agenda items.
Okay.
Yeah, in particular, we want to make sure that we have enough time for the discussion of the survey results and that presentation, and not try to shorten that to accommodate something else.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, well, that was one of the longest final board comments we've had in a while, a good 25 minutes. Are there any other final board comments from commissioners? Okay, well, we have completed our agenda for February, so we'll stand in adjournment until our March meeting.